The date is December twenty first, twenty twenty two, three o'clock. All commissioners present. Longer Charles Redd, City Manager, and Bobby Pickens, City Attorney. Everybody, please, stand, rise, wish your banks a good evening, our invitation.
Father, once again, we give you a thanksgiving for all your loving kindness and mercy that you have took care of down through this year and continuously bless us. We continuously pray for your strength and your guidance since all through two thousand and twenty-three. We act in your Saint Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which this stands, one nation under God, in the great majority of the world. Thank you all for being here today. And as Commissioner Bank said, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I'm sure you won't probably after the day see any of us. So, I might better wait.
See you next year.
Next year, I'll see you, yeah, see you in the new year, see you in the new year.
I know, meeting said it, go away.
With that, I don't really know that we have any announcements at this time. So, I'll go ahead and we've got the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of November twenty ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion in second, on favor, open discussion, yes.
Actually, there are some very necessary corrections here. In the very first paragraph, this is the wrong first paragraph that should say special meeting. And as well, it has the, it's got the wrong list of commissioners present. So, it needs to take out Commissioner West and I believe refer to Commissioner Bailey as Commissioner Bailey, not Commissioner-elect Bailey. And I don't know, I'm not sure the rest of the people there were correct because this was a special meeting.
Everybody else is correct, it's correct, except for that, for those corrections. Okay, anything else you have?
Well, and as well, on page two, under public comment, where it says Craig Sargent. I think a copy of the petition was distributed to the commissioners. I think that should be reflected. It says it can be viewed at City Hall, but a copy was distributed to the commissioners.
Well, he didn't do it at the meeting, that was prior to the meeting?
No, he did, because you had it, but we didn't have handed it out.
Oh, cool, he gave it to me prior to meeting, but he's not the one.
I never got a copy.
Okay.
Yeah, I never got a copy.
So, Karen made copies, Karen, you made copies at the meeting and handed them out to everyone, didn't you? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, just that happened, the copy of the petition was distributed, so it should be on the file.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. I need you to amend your motion, please, with corrections. Approve the minutes with corrections.
Necessary correction.
Great, with the necessary, I approve the minutes with the necessary corrections.
I second you.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, so moved. Okay, with that, let's move on to public comments. Do we have any public comments at this time? Okay, I see nobody coming forward, so I'm going to close public comments. And let's go to our public, open up our public hearing. This is the second reading, an ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-nine, amending fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget.
An ordinance of the city of present city Florida, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget to match actual revenues and expenditures.
Thank you, Mayor, this is just a second reading. As you recall, previous second reading, I had made corrections to the spreadsheet. So, we felt it was good to re-advertise and bring it back to you again for second reading, that's what they were doing.
Do I have a motion for the second reading?
I move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, do we have any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. Okay, am I recognized? Yes, thank you. Question from the city manager. So, on the, on the exhibit eight, on page five, about the third line from the bottom, other professional services. Okay, and then the second line from the bottom, other professional services, it says the original budget was thirty-nine thousand two hundred. We actually spent one oh four nine hundred?
Yes.
Okay, and that was, that was adding McLaren and the contract with the Peacock, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then the very next line down, accounting and auditing. So, we budgeted for fifty-five hundred and we spent ninety-three hundred something. And then the explanation was the audit has continued for months longer than normal. What I could not figure out is, what is the total that we spent for the audit? And I could, was it dispersed through the departments or?
It is, if you look, each department, almost every department has an accounting auditing line.
Right.
And that was spread over, and I don't have a total, I didn't ask for a total. We just did much more than normal, I know that because they, usually they're wrapped up on or before June.
Right.
So, we, you'll find most of the lines, even in this coming, this current fiscal year, you'll see we're going to budget more.
Right, so that's kind of what I thought, and I did manage to go through and find it. But, like, this is almost, for the finance and administration line, it was almost double, but it's serious, ain't quite that.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a final audit yet?
We do, I sent it out to you.
Send it out Monday.
Monday, in the email. We'll have hard copies for you, once they arrive by mail, or by own version, we'll pass out to you. But just check your city email.
I'll do it right before I can, when you say it.
Let me know, I can send it again, it's okay.
And then I have one more question.
Yes.
This is on page eleven, about midway down, midway down the page, about, I don't know, a little and halfway down the page where it says gas, oil, and tires. Originally, it was budgeted two thousand dollars for whatever permit that was. And then the actual amount spent was sixty-nine hundred and something due to the rising cost of fuel. And that just raises the question, again, like you said, with the audit. Are we going to have to make a budget adjustment for the current fiscal year because of the rising cost of fuel?
Well, we made some adjustments in the budget you approved.
Okay.
So, hopefully, we captured that.
Well, I was gonna say, we caught up with the.
That was the plan.
Right.
Time will tell.
Got it, okay, thank you.
And since we did that, I believe it's come down a little bit, too.
That'll help, yes.
That'll help.
But then, elect took just the best to go on, as we were.
Any other questions?
That, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioners, anybody else? If none, I have a proper motion in a second. All in favor, say, oh, I need to open it up for, I could open it up for additional factual testimony. Okay, public input, any public input? I'm in the public input, am I close public input? Okay, Commissioners, we have a proper motion in second, all in favor, please.
Can I just say something real quick?
Yes.
So, it was brought to our attention that, in at least one area, the meeting was, the agenda said six o'clock. But this ordinance in the paper was advertised as three P M., the marquee says three P M., and I believe the city website had said three P M. the entire time. So, I just had Karen, wherever it was posted wrong, just correct that.
Okay.
But it wasn't noticed for three P M.
And I know we even, at the last meeting, I believe it was even stated three P M. because I was starting at six o'clock.
Let me schedule it.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Bobby, for that clarification. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, so, accept your options.
Mayor, the next time, we're gonna ask you to table a renewal of the lease to Clinton County. I didn't realize when I was communicating with the county that it was the county legal department. We do not actually lease to the tax collector's office. They would like to be here, so I need to notify Mr. Subs and so forth and go to the department channels. So, the lease automatically reverts to a month-to-month, and so they'll be fine, and we'll bring this to you on the twelfth. And they'll be here to talk to you and answer your questions.
Okay. Do you want to vote on that, just to?
They could get a motion to table until January twelfth.
Can I get a motion, please?
I move that we table it to January the twelfth, if you do.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Okay, but they're not here to represent themselves, so.
Well, it's actually a question for Charles, to just go ahead and answer, since we're tabling it. And I noticed that the proposed update to the lease has an increased base amount for the rent. In other words, in the original lease, many years ago, it said two thousand dollars. The update says an added base amount, which is a good thing for us, but how did, how did that get there?
Well, my understanding, Bobby, because the original lease had a two percent automatic increase.
Right.
Annually, was stopped in twenty-eleven, and I haven't been able to find anything where there may have been a discussion about that. And it just, since then, it has not increased by two percent.
In talking to Linda Myers, the original lease had a larger footprint, also. So, we're gonna have to do some research, Bobby, to see if they changed that in any way. So, it had a larger footprint, so possibly that's when Gullett, because Gullett might have been part of that original footprint.
That space.
Yeah, that space, and so they removed that space. So, that's something for us to look into. But it was, the original lease had a larger footprint than what they actually have today.
So, basically, we're gonna be doing a brand-new spanking lease with a new footprint and a new number.
Well, it may have been the footprint.
If it hasn't been changed, that's what we have to find out to make sure that this current lease we're working off of, that no adjustments have been made to it since it originally.
It was renewed three years ago, that's why I suspect it represents the current footprint, we'll look into that.
We just have to make sure.
Right, Mayor, just one more question, because we have, we have the short one-page, where as clauses, I don't know, I guess this is a resolution, I don't know. Lease agreement renewal, and it specifically refers to the two thousand square feet at one seventeen North Summit not being included. That was very specific. So, what is one seventeen North Summit? But was that the, that must have been the original property that was gonna be used for the substation? But it must be.
No, that's not, no.
Okay, so, we, basically, we don't, we can't be sure about that.
All right, that could possibly be the, that was Gullett title, that's Gullett title, because we're not in the, we're not in the hundred block, they're in the hundred block.
Yeah, that's Gullett title.
So, it should be Gullett title, I think that's where they excluded it, but we just have to make sure.
Right, because my question was, one seventeen should be going northward, right?
Right.
And Gullett title is, okay, Gullett title is north, so that's.
Gullett title is north, that's one seventeen, they're one fifteen.
Okay.
Okay?
Now, do we have a base as far as the square footage, at least, the, you know, so much a square foot?
We do not have a fixed amount. And I think part of that discussion will be the improvements they've made to the space as well, and continue to do to the space. And I think that's what they're gonna present to us, is the investment they've made in the property.
And last year, they took on the painting, they came out with their actual budget, I do know that. They took care of all of the woodwork that needed to be fixed, and they took care of the painting and the building.
And the re-landscape.
And re-landscape, and re-landscape, and that came out of, several people, several offices shared that building, but that did come out of the tax, the tax collector's budget, and not the county's budget, so.
This is, this is a good.
We'll work it all out.
This is a good thing for us, for our residents, too, that happen here, it's very beneficial to everyone.
Okay, so with that, we. Um, okay, so with that, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, so moved, and it has been tabled. Let's go to the pull barn.
Mayor, this is an item we brought to you last summer. Uh, the idea of a pull barn has been kicked down the road for years. And then last summer, you approved, uh, commission approved purchase of the building. We knew it would be months for it to come in, so we requested to purchase the building, and we'd come back to you, the cost of construction, which we're doing today. Um, and the construction came in what we anticipated with the earlier bids. And I erroneously sent out the cover, didn't add together the cost of the footers and the construction. So I, I think you were given an amended cover sheet that represents the total amount of thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars. And this will become out of the Better Place Fund. Keith's here to answer any questions you can have about the barn.
Commissioners, can I get a motion of approval?
Um, I move that we approve the, like, the total amount, the thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars from the Better Place Plan Fund to construct the pull barn building and for the concrete. Um, I guess was, uh, as proposed by Ivy Group General Contractor.
Okay. Which one was first? Commissioner, I believe, I heard her first.
Yes, yes, you got it.
So we have a proper motion in a second. Commissioners, do we have any discussion?
I, I just have one question for Keith.
Yes, Ms. Harris, if you'd step forward, please.
Hi, thank you, thank you. Um, I'm sure we're going to be better off with a pull barn. Um, but I guess, um, this thing is gonna meet, um, hurricane standards or whatever, I mean, it'll be sturdy-
Yes, ma'am.
for a storm.
Yeah, it has to be, it has to go through the county, be inspected and all that, so it is hurricane approved.
Okay, um, I'm sure our equipment will be much better off.
Yes, ma'am, it will, and everything else that we decide to put in there.
Now, uh-
Thank you.
I have a question.
Ms. Bailey, you have a question?
Yes, please. Um, as an old farm boy in Missouri, I know the benefits of pull barn. Are we gonna need any engineering, uh, drawings or anything to-
It's all been done.
All been done, so this would encompass everything you need to get done, the-
The company that just designed the building, done all the engineering on the building. Um, we're just waiting now to get the approval, and then he'll get the permits.
Have we used this company before?
Not, this is the first building we've built in years, since probably two thousand three.
Thank you.
But they're, they're a big bill, big company.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we have a prop, uh, we have a proper motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So moved, let's move on to changing the date for February meeting. Everybody wants to, you wanna speak to this Charles, sorry?
Well, this is something attorneys have been asking, and kind of prepping us for a couple of meetings now, that, uh, there's no one available in February. Um, the following, uh, this, this would be the, normally would be the ninth. Uh, I know we had one commission with a conflict earlier that week. The next week, the sixteenth, Thursday, is our planning and zoning meeting. And the fourteenth is Valentine's Day, so, uh, could be the fifteenth, the Wednesday, for the regular meeting. You're, I guess you're out that whole week, right, that, before? Yeah, we leave on the fourth and get back on the tenth. So it needs to be the following week, uh, perhaps the fifteenth, that'll work for Wednesday night.
Oh, mayor, I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Wilson, um, I would like to move that we actually, uh, table this item for final decision until our regular meeting. Um, so that any member of the public who wants to speak on this would be able to at our regular January meeting.
I, I don't understand why the public needs to understand why we won't have any, uh, legal people here the week of, between the fourth and the tenth of February. I don't understand that.
As to whether or not we should reschedule the meeting. We're making a decision to reschedule the meeting. And the public might want to weigh in on that because they might want to say what is convenient to them.
Well, I think-
Well, we've got a motion, we have a motion, so, um, if anybody wants to second that.
How second it, that we actually, uh, wait a minute, what is the motion?
That we make the actual decision, and I don't have an objection to us.
I've got a question.
A possible date, but that we make the actual decision at the regular January meeting when members of the public are more likely to be here and can give their opinion of whether or not we should move the meeting.
I'm here.
Yeah, I'd second that. I think if we reschedule it and there's nobody here to know, they'll say, hey, you said that, you know, it's the second Tuesday of every month or whatever. It wouldn't hurt to hold off until we were there and so everybody knows. Just like it came up a little earlier about how, we said it was at three o'clock at the general meeting, therefore it's covered, I think, to cover.
Well, in, in that regard, I will say that Bobby has, has, um, mentioned this to us, I believe, twice now, at least twice, and the public at meetings. And, and I think just for, I think as courtesy to him, he was, he was very courteous to us to, to give us fair warning that we should possibly show some courtesy, some courtesy to him as well, and that the public has known that we are looking at February, moving that February date around.
And my only thing, 'cause, uh, we're not gonna not show up, so if it doesn't get moved, I'd need to change my flight to get back earlier or not go. So that's, but I totally understand if it needs to wait till January, I, I mean, whatever the commission's pleasure is. That's the only thing, if it doesn't get moved, I'll be here, so I'll either have to fly back earlier or don't go.
I really don't think it should be that strenuous for us to change the meeting, the commissioner, long as we have a meeting that month. And we are gonna have a meeting, it gonna be things gonna come up in life that we don't have no control of. And we shouldn't have to call up every citizen in the city and tell them that we, uh, John Rule couldn't make it because such and such. So that's why we asking you to change the meeting. I think, I, I think the citizens in town got enough confidence in us to allow us to change the meetings, long as we meet.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I'm gonna open the public comment.
Thank you.
You need to state your name.
Tracy, I heard, one oh nine North Prospect Street, saying I'm the only citizen that probably will come at three o'clock this afternoon. Um, I think it's absolutely ridiculous that you, as the commission, who are basically in charge of the city, the people sitting here, cannot make this decision. I agree totally with, uh, Commissioner Banks, that you have the authority to make that decision. I was here on two occasions, uh, when Mr. Pickens said that February meeting would have to be changed because of his schedule. And it is ludicrous that someone would say, oh, we have to wait until my little friends here schedule this meeting. You guys should schedule it now.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, right now, commissioners, we have a motion and we have a second on the table, um, to not, to table this until the January meeting. Do we have any further discussion before I call the vote?
Um, yes, I would like to make the comment about the pub, nature of the public comment. I'm not suggesting that we hold off until, and really, I think we need to address, I'm glad we're going to have a workshop on conduct in our meeting. I am not saying that we should hold off until, quote, my little friends are here. This is out of respect to the residents of the city and present city, to give them time to make a comment and public comment at a regular meeting. That is all. I'm not referencing any particular person.
Okay, thank you. Was this, um, properly, this was properly noticed too, this agenda, this agenda item was properly noticed as well? Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Which are they? Uh, nay.
Do, do we know what we're saying?
No, well, the, the vote that we're taking right now is that we don't do anything with this until January. So we're tabling, that was her motion, to table it until January. So do I want me to recall the vote?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye to, to table this until January.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay.
Wow.
Motion failed. Um, do I have a new motion? We need some dates, so, uh, we are gonna have to have, we need a date, so, Charles, what date are you suggesting?
I'm suggesting the fifteenth.
Fifteenth of February?
Yeah, 'cause fourteen is Valentine's Day, and the sixteenth is planning and zoning.
Does anybody have a conflict with the, with the fifteenth? Okay, so I need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to move the February ninth meeting, uh, commission meeting to February fifteenth.
Aye, sir.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? Commissioners, any discussion?
Um, yes, I have a comment. Um, our charter sets the time, the date, and the time for our meetings, and I think whenever possible, we should stick to that. We've been moving these meetings quite a few times, and I think it's, um, I think it's not the best. I think our citizens should be able to count on the regular meeting time, and that, that's it, they should be able to count on it. And that, that's how it should be, so.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? And, um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, so moved. Meeting is set for February fifteenth. Karen, would you please make sure that, that we put that out, um, as soon as possible so that everyone has ample notice? I'll give them two months. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to legislative delegation meeting discussion.
Mayor, I, uh, brought up in the last meeting that, um, January ninth, uh, the legislative delegation will be here. Palaca and all the communities go there and present, and give their list of, of, uh, funding requests and priorities for the coming year, particularly the second. I put together a list of the items that we've talked about. Um, I realized right after I hit copy, I didn't put the two million dollar price tag on the fire and ambulance station. Um, that, and we've had some preliminary discussions with ours, our representative Payne. Uh, said that's very doable, to build a combined fire ambulance facility to replace the one we have now. Uh, and other projects, we're currently designing the Prospect Street, um, as a two-phase project. If we did both phases, it would be nearly two million dollars for the construction. Um, each phase would be about, um, about half that. I'm not sure, the one, I think one phase might be a little bigger than the other. Uh, the Grand Rondo Septic Tank Phase Out, um, that's an estimated million and a half dollar construction project. Uh, the main, South Main Street Water Improvement, that's a little under five hundred thousand dollar construction. We're, we're currently designing that with our funds. And then, um, water treatment system improvements, this is from our, our consulting engineer. There's a list of things, um, the design up to a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and then the construction, depending on the project, up to two million dollars for construction. And then I put, um, becoming increasingly evident that we need a stormwater master plan, and those are very expensive plans. I don't know if they would, we could pay that with state funds. Uh, Keith did make me aware yesterday of a ready grant program up to a million dollar and a hundred percent reimbursable for these type of projects. So we're certainly gonna go after that. Um, but we also wanna ask the state, um, if you could, if you agree with these, and, and I put a sort of a priority list. If you wanna rearrange, whatever you wanna do, let me know, then the mayor will be making a presentation on the night.
And please, anyone, uh, I believe last year, Commissioner Vito, you and Commissioner Burton were there, correct? And stood up there with me, I believe.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I have some questions for Charles. Uh, okay. So, last year, we had not, um, voted on any legislative priorities, and the mayor, um, obviously, the commission hasn't voted on it. The mayor can't, uh, present it as a priority, because she can't choose it. Um, but she did a really good job of outlining our general needs and issues. So my question to you, when you spoke to Representative Payne, um, did, he said the higher ambulance station, quote, was something that he thought he could put forward for us?
Yes.
Um, but, or did you review these other issues with him?
No, I did not.
Okay, 'cause my concern about this is, um, to me, this is more like a county list. I mean, it's, um-
It's more like a what?
It's, it's more like a, it's more like a county's list. I mean, the county is big, they put more on their list. It's, it's not, it's not guaranteed that you're going to receive your legislative priority. I guess, to me, it seems like, um, we should choose our one big item, if Representative Payne encourages us and asks for that. And that, um, we, the other issues, I think, would fall into the category of what the mayor did last year, and say that these are things, um, that the city specifically needs, because the legislature may be funding, they may be funding general appropriation items that cities might be able to apply for. I don't know, to me, for a city, this is a long list.
Company, you feel like we should focus down and concentrate on one big ask and the other just needs?
And, and, just to, if I can, if I can, if I can speak to that too. This is our, if we're, if we're gonna get these in there, this is our year to do it. So we might as well give them everything we have. I think we can prioritize those, and I feel like Charles has possibly, has prioritized them-
Yeah.
already, and that's, but I, I do feel like that this year is something that if we're gonna put it in there, that we need to have it in there. From a leadership standpoint, and-
Sure.
in the legislature, and I know you understand that.
Yes.
Um, and where we are with it right now, that, you know, Putnam County, um, you know, we might have, we might have an opportunity. Um, and, and right now, emergency stations are also, you know, it's, um, there, there is funding that they're working with, with that. Um, our I S O ratings, that the county's gonna be looking at, you know, broadband, of course, is a big issue for the county still. And, um, and, you know, but our I S O ratings are still not where they need to be. We have a new rating coming in, um, for the county, should be in this first quarter, and they're hoping it will have moved it just based on what the county has done already. So we do know that this will help out, this could help out our residents too with the fire ambulance station. But I feel like we need to have it as detailed as possible, and then, and then we can prioritize, saying, you know, this is our first priority. However, if any of these-
And that's probably a different pot, I would think.
Yeah.
Comes out of a different pot, the ambulance fire would be a different pot than our water sewer.
Infrastructure.
Yeah.
Um, well, depending on if they're doing environmental, if they're doing emergency, depending on, you know, what they're putting their priorities on this next, this next, like, season.
Well, they, there's a separate pot, or there used to be a separate pot for specific, um, locusts that are specifically funded for specific locations. Um, but the one thing that I don't see on here, um, that they spent a lot of money on last year, and is important to us, is, um, historic preservation funding. I mean, we could make a specific ask for, um, Central Avenue, or we could make a specific ask, you know, for the historic district. Um, you know, to assist our refurbishment.
For restoration projects?
Yes.
These are just, these are like, kind of prepackaged projects that knew we had in the hot book.
We know.
I was able to just pull it out of my old files and, and, and put it in a priority list. Um, but we could create something, kind of short time to put it into a, like, to get estimates, we could just guess. Maybe we want half a million dollars for-
I think that's, I don't know, that might, that might be a little high.
And we've also asked, um, Representative Payne, and I, I believe he is gonna try to work in his schedule to come down here and just kind of, um, look at the, 'cause he's also interested in, um, you know, he's with D O T, because we're still need the light down at three oh eight, um, you know, and seventeen, so we've requested that he does come down here and at least, you know, look at our fire station, kind of look at the city and see what condition, you know, what things that our projects are and what we need.
Right, but, um, if this is our year to ask, and we have some buildings that specifically have needs, um, and I think we have a couple of buildings that we have a good idea of what the needs are, this would really be the time. And, you know, I think for some of these buildings, time is of the essence. So I, I would like to see us help, um, the historic district, and particularly the Central Avenue district, by making that specific budget request.
When does this have to be submitted? Like, when do these-
We, we present, we present on the ninth, we present on the ninth.
January ninth?
We present on January, at two o'clock in the county chambers, the county chamber at two o'clock.
Now, pardon my ignorance, but I'm not used to seeing this before, but this is basically a wish list. that we would send in, and do we have any idea of how they would prioritize?
Well, I'm not, I'm not real familiar with it. I know in Newport, Richey, I was tasked with a, um, legislative ask for a pedestrian bridge over US 19, and there was a whole form I had to fill out and, and we sent it to DOT and, and we didn't get it, but, so I would imagine each one of these, at some point, will be submitting, filling out and submitting a form to a particular agency who's over that and making that request, formalizing the request. I was working with our, we had a lobbying firm that helped us. Then they would take the ball and run with it until it has seemed for our ask.
Do we know what percentage they accept? I mean, if we submit this list as
Could be zero.
one or two or zero?
Could be a hundred, could be a hundred percent, could be zero percent.
You don't have any idea?
Yeah.
No, I think that's how Palaca got their
Yeah.
water plant and other things, through this process.
Yeah. Yes, Commissioner DeVito.
I think we're, given that the legislative session starts in May, we're past the point of submitting in March, whatever, sorry. We're past the point of submitting something to a department. We're, in other words, we're two months out from session, so, um, it's, it's going to be handled on a shorter timetable, but no, there absolutely, um, the mayor said it could be zero. We don't know, and this list is a presentation at the legislative delegation meeting. That we might or might not be requested by legislature to fill out some forms. We can add to this, we can take off, but legislative delegation meeting is the time to, um, say something.
And then he can, they can choose which ones they, if, you know, if there's one that, that they really want to, um, to carry, then, then they can choose that, and they can also leave it up to us, and we can go up there and lobby on our own behalf too, you know, to the various legislators.
Yes.
So, you know, we have, we have some options, we have some options here, but it's just, we might as well put it out here on the table because you just, you just never know. You know, they might go in and say stormwater is, is a big issue this next year and say, well, you know, this is a rural community, what rural communities are looking at stormwater. And, you know, and that's where our master plan, you know, could possibly come in, so. I, I, I do agree that we could prioritize, and I believe Charles has already kind of, through working with Keith and, and that he's already prioritized these in order.
So this is the, this is the way you want this prioritized?
Charles.
It's just my recommendation.
Yes.
We can move these around if we want to. I did it kind of based on cost, trying to get the big dollar ones up top and then, uh, going down line.
How much was the ambulance?
Two million.
Yeah, I did put $2 million on there.
Two million.
What we're going to ask for.
Actually, I don't remember what was the, um, what was the cost estimate when we got the plan?
That was, that's under a million for just an ambulance bay.
Yeah.
We think, um, the entire package, because they, the reason we said two million was, um, Representative Payne was successful in getting that for the west side of the county.
Interlocking that.
So he said, I think, $2 million station is doable.
Yeah.
Well, I would, um, like to move that we adopt the list, um, of legislative priorities proposed by our city manager. Also with the addition of funding for historic preservation projects, um, for the, um, the Main Street area.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
So now?
Yeah, we're going to say, now, so change this list.
She's adding, she's adding on there about the historic, the historic preservation. Yes, she's adding.
With the addition, the same, the same, but just adding this.
But adding historic.
We need to do a wish list, like you said, we need to do it once we can, right?
So we have a motion and we have a second.
Just for clarification?
Yeah.
When you mean the Main Street area, you mean the street called Main or the Main Street program area?
Main Street program, those, Main Street program area. And like Secretary Byrd, so Secretary Byrd, when he was here, um, and, and did the tour, he saw the Sonic Lodge and, and learned the history. Veronica did a good job, you know, of speaking to that. He might, that might be something that if we have up here on here our historic, that he might say, he might jump into the mix too and say, well, listen, I was in Crescent City, it's a new Main Street. We want to get this jump started, so.
Do you have a, do you have a dollar amount in mind?
I wouldn't say not to, no, I would leave that up to your judgment.
Okay.
Right, and, no. No, I'm not just saying Main Street north and south. I live on Main Street. I would love a brain. Don't think that's...
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So noon. Um, please, if you can, um, join us.
Try to be there.
Try to be there on the ninth at two o'clock, yes, in the county commission, committee room, yeah. I think because if we're all, you know, if we're all standing there, it, um, it will have a much better impact.
Where is that? What, what did you say?
The county commission.
A Krill.
On Krill Avenue in Palaca. Um, that's where the county offices are, right there.
What time was it?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock, 2:00 PM.
January ninth.
January ninth, yeah. I think if we're all there, it just will give us...
And Mayor, I have a question while we're on the legislative delegation issue. We got an email, I don't know if you got one, from the League of Cities. They sent out a draft resolution asking, um, cities to support the League of Cities legislative platform. I sent this to Charles, uh, I think Karen today and asked him to hand it out. I don't think there's, there's not time for us to really discuss it, or we can't do anything with it today. But we could discuss it, but anyway, this is the resolution, you have one in front of you, by the League of Cities that lists the League of Cities, um, priorities that they're going to be asking the legislature for, and, um, it's things that should help all cities. But anyway, it's been passed out to everyone, and I'm hoping that we could put that on our January agenda.
Everybody should have gotten a copy. This is when we got it, so, so we'll just put this on the January, yeah, put it on the January agenda, which is growing.
It's its own agenda, yeah.
Has its own agenda. Everybody be prepared for January. Okay, with that, do we have, um, any additional reports and comments?
I do.
Okay, I, I have one for the commission yet, so let's go. That's okay. I'm going to start with city manager?
I have nothing.
Good morning. Morning.
I'm leaving.
Good morning, okay. Commission?
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, yes. Um, okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Bailey, you said you have something that you need to...
Yes, um, I would like to give a little kudos out. We don't always get those to Mr. Rudd. We had originally talked about putting some speed bumps at Grand Rondo, and I am happy to say that they worked.
Oh, ba-bum, ba-bum.
They significantly reduced the speed, and a couple of cars I've seen that started their normal Grand Rondo race runway and has slowed down significantly. In fact, I think one experiment we could use is to take away the barriers now and see if we don't have to build that out that as soon as they hit that road, they see the signs, they see the things that I mean, that has significantly reduced the speeding there. The double thing, I think, is really what is done. I know myself, I even slowed down to just a couple miles an hour go over, and I pretty would, pretty much, you know, adhered to the speed limit, but it's, it's been, it's been significant. So I thank you for putting those up. We had that discussion, and you brought it up, so I'd like to even do that, like what you did.
Yeah, those are the temporary ones, correct?
Yeah, they're, they're spiked in.
Yeah, they're spiked in. Yes, Commissioner Burton?
I agree, get rid of the barriers there, and I also think to try to get rid of the barriers on Pine. I don't know if you've noticed, but they've opened them up, uh, wide open from Union, and they're going along the grass on Reed, so just time to get rid of them.
Let's hope you can.
Nobody's taking, yeah, nobody's taking any of that serious right now. It looks like hell, and it's just time to take them down. I mean, we don't have to wait through January if you want to go down now.
Well, aren't we having a traffic calming workshop?
On the, on the tenth, yes.
Right, I mean, I think the neighbors would be a little surprised if we just took the whole thing down.
Yeah.
Now, we can take it down.
Not until, not until then.
They turn them, perfectly. Well, there are, we can do that, but they're driving around the power pole and still going down.
Yeah, they're, they're just, they're just being crazy. They're, they're not worth having up anymore, and it looks like hell, so.
Yeah, they're, they're driving around through Skid Row, and then they're cutting that corner right there.
I see somebody do it. I, I didn't even take that, get telling them, but it won't do no good.
Can everybody have a nice Christmas and holiday, I'm glad.
Do we have, um, one other comment, Commissioner Bailey?
Some questions for the city manager. Several people have expressed concern about, um, the new trash cans that are being delivered. If, for people who need assistance, um, Waste, Waste Pro or Waste, what do we have?
Waste Pro.
Waste Pro, sorry. Um, so Waste Pro said, uh, there's going to be a procedure if people need assistance. People, some people have received their trash cans. What are, or there's, there're going to be guidance issued on what people do if they need assistance in getting their trash can out to curb.
We can send out notice that they contact Waste Pro for that service. They work directly with Waste Pro for that.
Okay, Work, Work, Waste Pro, um, because people are asking.
Yeah, I think that was safety or doing that.
Yeah, that they could, that they would do, they would do that, and, and he said, I spoke to Daniel because they're in spots right now. They're not targeting, they're, they have a map that they're going by, so some will get one, some, and then, you know, like a neighbor across the street didn't get one, and he called them actually and said, hey, I haven't gotten my toter on. My neighbors got their toters. He said he's gotten really good response from most everybody out there, but that they're having to hit it by this map, and like he called earlier today and said, there's two that I, and then he, he called back and said, oh, wait a second, they're on another page, they're on another page, so they're kind of hit and miss all over town right now based on addresses that were given to them, but he said, really, um, you know, we have pickup tomorrow. He said, just use your general tomorrow. A lot of people have already put garbage in their garbage cans, and he said, just go ahead and put them in, you can start them for those that have them next week.
And they'll be able to keep their garbage cans for yardways.
Yeah, yeah, you can keep your garbage cans, you can keep your garbage cans for, um, through yardways, but he said for the most part, people were, um, and I know when I got home, this was a while ago, they're opening my street, and they actually looked...
They brought a load of 500 of them down in a semi truck, and then.
And they've been, they've been assembling them, so.
Well, it just seems like, especially for the people who are going to need help, um, that maybe now would be the time for an announcement to be sent out so that we don't have to feel that call, the Waste Pro doesn't have to do it one by one. Also, another item that I have is, um, also, this is revolved to South Prospect Street as well as Oakwood and Reed Avenue. I've received calls and I've seen video on social media that we have one or more packs of dogs, large dogs, that are roaming in people's yards at night, and also the apartment, one of the apartment complexes on Oakwood, killing cats and approaching children and walkers. And people tell me that they have called animal control, and they have called the sheriff's office, and the packs of dogs continue to roam. Gail Urban, who lives on South Prospect Street, posted a video of three very large dogs right up in her yard, and she has found a dead cat. This is not a good situation. I, I don't want people to be out walking and to be approached by those like three, four, five dogs running around.
It seems like, and I've spoken to, um, both Captain Osree and Cheryl with animal control, and, um, she says they've been down there, they have a trap out, and they've been working on this. He said they're all, he said, he was even out in the woods trying to, um, track them, track where they were coming from to see where they're coming from. It seems like they're only seeing them at night, but they're not possibly running during the day, so possibly somebody was letting them out, um, at night, and, um, she says Donald, when he comes in every morning because he parks over here, um, that Donald has been trying to patrol that as well to see. So, I mean, I know people are saying that there's nothing being done, but they're, they're, they're limited in what they can do, and if they don't see the dogs, if they can't find the dogs, there's not, there's not a whole lot that they, they can't capture them if they don't see them, but they are working on it and they're very aware of it. And I also talked to, uh, Cheryl about, and I was going to talk to Charles about it, that possibly we need, um, maybe animal control to come in and kind of give us an overview of what they can, what resources they do have and what they can and cannot do, so that, you know, the residents have a better understanding as to who it needs to go to when these, when these things happen. The two dogs, the three dogs down on Chestnut, they did capture one of those.
Right.
And the other two, they were in, I guess they were in traps. By the time he got there, Donald got there, somebody had, had let them out of the traps. It seems like somebody had let them out of the traps. Now, that's on Chestnut.
Right, I heard that. Um, so is, is Donald in animal control?
Animal, yeah, Donald's the animal control. Now, he doesn't work this area per se, but he parks his, he lives at Atlanta, so he parks his car here, so in the mornings, he's kind of, does his patrol, but Cheryl is, um, Cheryl is the, um, the one for the area, for, for this, for South Putnam and this area, so.
Well, my concern is, apparently, animal control is telling people there's nothing they can do, but basically, our ordinance, I'm not sure about the county ordinance, our ordinance says no loose dogs. I mean, if they see a loose dog, aren't they supposed to pick it up?
If they...
If they can catch it.
If they can catch it, if they can catch it, and that's the big thing, and she said they don't have those, they don't have those nets where they can throw them out and capture, you know, and capture it. If they can't capture the dog, she said it's, you know, it's whatever they have available to them, um, that, that they can work with, but she said also they have to be able to see the dog, um, so, you know, but they're on it. She says they are, they know that this has been, you know, they're, they're just as frustrated. Um, they're just as frustrated as everybody else is about this too, um, so. It's, it's, they're getting around wherever.
Can I say this?
Yes.
You know, the years I've been over the commission, we always had dog problems in Crescent City. I mean, a long time, I, I've been sitting up here, and almost ever since, under every change of, of leadership, we had dog problems. And we don't seem to get, sorry, we had one lady was catching them, uh, she was getting aggravated because she was catching them and had a dog down out there to her house. Junction Road, going around there like you're going on out there by the Harrison. She would take it out there, so there ain't nowhere to put them. So this is nothing strange, yeah. It seems that, uh, I don't know what other cities are doing, but, or other counties are doing, but it been a task in putting a cane for years. It ain't just started. Dogs, uh, catching people cats, killing them, getting their rabbits, killing them, getting some, some of the other animals on Prospect Creek, killing them. It's just been a problem.
Is there, is there anything, um, you know, I, I noticed with our wish list, there's nothing there that has anything involved with possibly bringing in something to control animals here?
I think that would probably be, um, that's going to probably be something I would hope to learn from the county. I don't know what the county is going to do.
Well, county's been, you've been hoping for the county for how many years? I've lived here four years, hoping for the county, hoping for the county. But, but why can't Crescent City, I mean, we are our own little city, why can't we, uh, try and focus, do something to focus on that ourselves? Do you understand what I mean?
I, I understand what you mean.
I understand.
Why, why are we waiting for the county? Because the county...
Because of the cost, and, and then we have to figure out, I mean, I understand, and that would be, you know, we, we'd have to have a position that's...
To catch them.
That's catching them.
Catch them and then put them somewhere. I know one of the, in the, in the south side of town, those dogs, one time they couldn't pick up the dogs because the, the pound was full.
Yeah.
So there's no point in picking it up because the facility was a maximum. So that, I think that's, it's just one of those problems, um, that's just ongoing. I don't know where we'd put the dogs if we had someone to go catch them.
Well, I have, I have something to say to follow up on Mr. Burton's excellent suggestion. I think the mayor's right, this, this is a county responsibility, um, and I think one thing that Crescent City could do is to adopt a specific position and advocate for our area with the county, and citizens are asking the county to do something. We've never, as a commission, made a specific ask, and we could do that. We're probably a little too small to build our own pound, um, but... Um, we're probably a little too small to build our own pound, um, but we could ask for money for a spay and neuter program, um, for one of our nonprofit organizations to operate or both of them. And I think that would be a great idea.
But I think that, you know, before you just ask for a nonprofit to, to do it, we, we need, we need something like, uh, Deval County has, like Orange County has. You know, Putnam County's gotta start stepping up a little bit. And basically, they have their areas that spay and neuter. They take care of all of that. They, i- i- it's, I work with Deval County and they're wonderful up there, okay? And it's reasonably priced to bring your cats and dogs in, forty dollars a pop, okay? And they spay, they neuter, they bring your animals home. And, and also their pound, if that's what you wanna call it, um, uh, you can bring your cats in and, uh, they're a no kill situation and they find homes for them. Uh, and they also spay and neuter kittens, okay, once they reach two months old. So the, the, I think that we could have a center of sorts down here in South Putnam. Not, not exactly in, right here in Crescent City, but in South Putnam. But, but Putnam County has, has no clue, I guess, how to do any of that. Putnam County sits there, i- i- they can't even get the new, uh, structure built. I don't even know where they're trying to build the new structure for, for Animal Control. But they, you know, they've sat on that money for four years. And, and I really think, I, I don't know what makes Putnam County move, but they seem to have problems with this. They seem to have problems with permits to build. They seem to have all kinds of problems to move forward and progress uh, into the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, future, okay? They, they just seem very slow with all this, so. Uh, but that's where it's gotta be and that's where it's gotta, we gotta take this, this to Putnam County and, and start being very, very much vocal about it, you know, as.
And I think we start with, and I have my suggestion, uh, maybe we start with having them come down and present to us, having John come. He's the director, he's over all of, he's over all of that, possibly, um, you know, with Terry Suggs and Commissioner Pickens. So they have a general understanding, you know, the frustration that the residents have and just giving us an overview and an update and, and, and what, hear from us. Now, this is our concern, what can, what can be done?
They've just, um, reorganized. They created another deputy position, J.R. Grimes, who got their fire department squared away.
Now, operations.
Operations, which is Public Works, Animal Control, Building and Parks.
Well, it seems like Putnam County just wants to catch them and then put them in a pen. Well, I know that's not the answer.
Well, uh, Mayor, if I could just mention, you want to have Crescent County come here and give us this data and an update. Actually, when Ruffin Pike first moved in full time in twenty seventeen, we went to a meeting that Commissioner Pickens had and he brought Terry Suggs and there were animal advocates there and they did exactly that. And I think Commissioner Burton has a very good point. That was five years ago and we have not seen the change. I think Commissioner Burton has a very good idea that advocacy from South County is good and also action. And I think that, um, I don't know that we would get the money, but I think that our animal nonprofits here, but ARP and SPAN, um, are well qualified to handle a grant to spay and neuter. SPAN, not a ten thousand dollar grant.
They're not, they're not for the number of animals that we have right now. It's, it's out of sight. When you, it, you, you need something, we need to go learn from these other areas that have good programs. We need to go up to Deval County. We need to go down to Orange County. How did you get this big building, okay, where you can, when you, where you can take a hundred cats a day and every day, okay? A- and for Deval County residents, it's free. For me, because I'm Crescent City, I had to pay forty dollars a pop. I don't mind that, okay? But how can you, how have you managed to do that and make it so that animals get spayed, animals get neutered, and they are allowed to go back out and not reproduce? We, we can't do one animal at a time. We can't, we just, it just doesn't work the way it's working right now. And, and, um, you know, you can't, we got one vet and you pay him a hundred fifty bucks for one cat, a hundred fifty bucks for one dog. It just doesn't work, you know? So we need, we, we need to really start kind of getting together and saying, okay, how can we figure out Putnam County to, to make this work? And work well.
And I could reach out too. I could reach out to, um, the other two mayors too, because I know they're dealing with this.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very big problem.
We've had this discussion, so I could reach out to them as well and say, maybe it becomes more of a South Putnam.
Yes.
That we as a, that South Putnam does this.
As a group.
Yeah, brainstorm.
Now, what about a, uh, citizen volunteer group like, uh, Neighborhood Watch, only if something was to happen, just like you said, there's nothing in town, that the citizens actually go out, catch the dog, bring it to the pound or whatever? Because obviously, these dogs are, it, it's past the spay and neuter thing, like you were saying, uh, th- these dogs run out there, maybe spay or neuter. Who knows what the wild dog is that's out there? They have to be picked up off the street.
Some kudos to my neighborhood. Um, we had a very high cat population and we had one person that had many cats, okay? And she came to me and said, what, can you help me with this? Well, between, my whole neighborhood, okay, our block, what did we take in? We took in twenty-five cats to be spayed and neutered and we took in twenty-five kittens to be adopted or spayed and neutered depending upon their age. Um, and Tracy and I did that. We did the trucking, we did the catching. Uh, we did this for what, four months, I think, four or five months. The cost to us, we, it came out of our own pockets to do it. It came out of their pockets as well, okay? It probably was about a thousand dollars to get it all done because there were so many. But, but the point I'm trying to make is that works well if you have people that are willing to do that, but it's, but it's costly. And now it's very much manageable in our neighborhood. And people can't be more happy than they are with, with what we do. And every time I, every now and then, if it gets a little bit out of control, I help, have maybe bring more cats in. Different people ask me to do that. But it, it can't be a burden on, you know, just people that want to do that, so.
Absolutely.
It, it's gotta, Putnam County's gotta get it together, you know? They just kick the ball down the road on everything.
Well, and, and like you said before, we, we can't depend on Putnam County to get the dogs. They're not doing their job.
Well, that's what you have to get after though. We have to start telling them this is what we need and start working to get it done.
Tell the county to, to, to get on.
Maybe, maybe the three municipalities can get together.
I think the three, yeah, in a respectful way going in and trying, in a respectful way and just, um, you know, tell them that this is something that needs to be addressed. And, and I know they know it. I know Commissioner Pickens, he gets calls about the dogs. He's gotten calls about these dogs. Um, so, you know, I know they're, I know they're aware of it.
It's a pack of five dogs running around and they're big dogs, they're strong dogs. You can see them. I've got pictures. I've sent them to Osree. You've seen those pictures. Um, you, you start getting dogs that become packs and they become very dangerous. We have people now that are out walking their dogs or even walking them, um, that are carrying their pistols, okay? And, and of course, that's probably what's gonna happen is eventually at least one of them will be shot, uh, so you'll get rid of one. But, but the problem is, is you can't have these packs going around, um, and people afraid. I mean, we're trying to become a city that people, that, that's walkable and yet we can't because we got these wild dogs running around. So, you know, something's gotta get.
I think I'll remember, come up with a good suggestion there. Call the leadership of Putnam County, uh, not the one that are, uh, over it. They gotta have somebody.
But you got J.R., so with J.R. coming in, I mean, J.R.'s, he's, he's pretty aggressive in, in, you know, with issues, so this'll be.
And let him know the, uh, our problem and, 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 and I reckon see what he can do with it. That's gonna be a start.
Okay, Commissioner DeVito, yep.
Yeah, well, I was sure. Um, we have some new information from Charles. And Charles, by the way, I do want to, speaking of kudos, I want to say thank you for the excellent list of legislative priorities or funding list. Um, I think we all, I appreciate that and who knows, maybe it will do us good. So thank you for that, great work. Um, the city manager sent, um, an email, uh, the subject of whether or not the school board needs to follow our land development code. And apparently, um, they do. So, um, we got, I think everybody got that email. So apparently, they have to follow our local comp plans, which I don't even know what it says, and land development codes as far as locations and approval processes. Um, as long as the topic isn't covered in their building code. I'm reading from what the city manager reported from Mark Caret, the planner. Um, and also, there was an attorney general's opinion forwarded that Bobby supplied. And, um, I asked Bobby and he said that attorney general's opinion probably still holds. So, um, my question is, what is the next step about that? Because, um, also, at the mayor's request, we asked Mr. Bowling from the school district to come answer our questions. And he didn't do that. He presented to the school district on the thirteenth, um, and apparently, basically, he said, um, they're going to bulldoze everything, including, um, the, one of the contributing historic structures.
I didn't hear, I did not hear that.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything about.
I, I listened to it and I didn't hear him say they were bulldozing. I know that some of that has to be taken down. Some of it's full of asbestos. So they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to look at, is it gonna be from a cost standpoint, you know? But I haven't heard that they, I ne- I never heard him say they were gonna bulldoze all the buildings.
Well, it's, what I understood is that they're only saving two buildings and we, maybe we all heard different things. But, um, my question is, what do, um, if they have to follow our local comp plan and land development codes for certain purposes, what does that actually mean? Um, what does that mean for site planning? What does that mean for the development review process? Um, really, if we have, um, if we have reviews to do, I think we need more information about it.
Well, they'll, they'll be, um, and we'll remind them, they need to submit to us their site plan, preliminary site plan. Uh, so we'll review it, well, our development review committee, which is Mark Corret, uh, Jason Shapler, who's our engineer, uh, Public Works, Fire, all, all our departments look at their plans. Uh, then it has to go to the planning zoning board, just like the, you know, went through with the RV park. So there'll be a process and then they'll come back for final site line approval. And Mark, what Mark assured me is, is what often happens is the school board says, we're gonna give you our plans as a courtesy. But, so they sort of act like they don't need to, but, but they do need to. They have their own building code. There's apparently a separate building code for schools. But the land development code, the site considerations, we'll, we'll look at it for setbacks and landscaping and architectural features and traffic analysis. We can request all that traffic study. We, we can do all that and it'll be up to us to keep pressing. And this is when it's good. I know sometimes, um, planners can, can get on your nerves a little bit, but they're, you know, they're, they're really sad and aggressive on the rules. Sometimes that comes in handy. And so we'll turn him loose on the process and make sure that, you know, we're, they are following and we're aware of what's going on and, and we'll just have to stay on. I know they've done RFP out now for an architect, so they're still very early in the process, um, of designing the, the building and the site that will.
Right, so have they spoken to you specifically about that?
No, I have not.
So, because, I mean, specific concerns that I have for the neighbor and our historic district are, you know, does, are we going to be able to apply our tree ordinance for the heritage trees on the property? Um, our historic preservation ordinance, the, those kinds of things. I mean, can we get some clarification on what?
Everything we have currently adopted is at fault.
Okay.
So it's up to us to, to make sure that happens, do the review and then make the comments and, and, and it's, I think Bobby may have mentioned to me, sometimes when it comes down to negotiating, um, you know, if it's something we're saying you have to do and they're saying this is onerous and is gonna make it cost too much.
Right.
We end up negotiating for a, a common ground.
Okay. And they don't have an architect yet. Like Charles said, they've just put out the RFP, so they don't even have architects chosen yet.
Charles, we have, we have the long chain recently of outstanding and real progress.
What do you mean?
I'm sorry?
Uh, you know, once upon a time, if the government of some agency wanted to put something up, like a highway, I, I mean, you. Um, you could do what you wanna do. The, the, the bottom line, they were gonna put the highway up. And then they had the federal government or some kind of law was on their side. I can't think of what they call it. It's a word to call it.
Eminent domain.
Yeah, right.
The eminent domain is when you take the property in order to accomplish this, but that, this is.
That's exactly what he's talking about.
Yeah, we, I don't think we could successfully stop the project.
No.
But we, we just could kind of slow it down.
Well, we're gonna try to shape it to our requirements. And if, 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 for instance, if our code said you, you can't rebuild there, uh, Bobby would be negotiating with their attorney and we'd have to come to some negotiated settlement, you know? It'd come down to the attorneys talking. So I don't believe we can stop it, but we can certainly, um, try to shape the outcome so it fits our community and meets our code. And if it doesn't meet our code, they have to have a good reason and, and talk to us about the, the economics of it or some legitimate reason, so.
Okay. I remember we had this discussion, I'd asked if there's any way they could do anything as far as the use of the buildings for the community and trade for some of this allowance, what goes on. Some of those buildings over there could be used for city, community buildings or something of that nature as well.
Well, they have, I'm not familiar with their rules about access on campus for the safety of children and so forth. That may come into, into play.
Well, actually, I could speak to that. I mean, I think some of us, the mayor, uh, Commissioner Burton, I don't know if Commissioner Banks was there. The school board, I mean, the school district staff had a forum for the community. And both there and at presentations to private groups like Rotary, which operate them speak twice, they have talked about, um, the auditorium at least being a resource for the community. They have talked about that.
That's true.
Um, but actually, that leads to one more thing I wanted to say on this subject. Um, it's a big subject. Um, we had a little bit of long information and as well, um, I was reflecting on the discussion we had on this topic on our last meeting. Um, Commissioner Burton, I think, said something about as far as, you know, the school district building on that particular site, that we had lost that battle when the bond issue passed. But actually, um, this commission has never taken a position on where the school district should, um, what site they should utilize. We have not actually had that discussion. So it seems to me like there wasn't really a battle to lose. We didn't take a position. Um, and I think it is apparently not correct that we have no say in what goes on there. And as well, um, just turning this over to the school district to deal with any concerns of the neighbors or the businesses. I think reflecting on it, the concerns of the neighbors and the businesses is really the job of the city commission and the city staff. We represent them. We are supposed to represent their interests. So I would like to see us, um, keep closer tabs on this and make sure that everything that's done, I'm, I'm sure the school district needs permits for various things. Um, I see it as part of our job to make sure that they dot every I and cross every T in getting their permits. Um, and of course, we don't wanna stand in the way of progress, but we wanna make sure that it benefits everybody equally. You know, we don't wanna go back to the days, um, urban revitalization in the seventies that destroyed neighborhoods and created, um, economic dead zones. And we're the city commission. It's our responsibility to make sure this turns out well. So, um, I think we need to keep tabs on it. And I certainly think if there's, um, meetings that occur that every, everybody ought to know about it. And I, I still think that is very essential that a representative of the school district come here at Crescent City, speak to the commission and tell us what their timetable is, what permits they're applying for, that's happening in our city. And I think they really ought to be talking to this commission. It's our job.
Mayor, I'll just mention that, um, actually, in our adopted strategic plan, the commission did take the position that actually that if you want the property, uh, it's sort of the. the commission did take the position that, actually, that we want the property, uh, as sort of the primary goal, to take, to take the whole property, and then, well, so I conveyed that to them, and the backup is, we were very interested in the lakefront and the Central Avenue frontage. If they were insisted on reutilizing it, we would want them to back away from Central Avenue, and currently, the, the lakefrontage is fenced off, they can't allow the children down there, obviously. And our redevelopment plan shows us having a boardwalk, uh, along the lakefront to create public access and view the lake. So, we did convey that to them, we, the number one thing is, we want the whole property. Secondly, we want, we're interested in the Central Avenue frontage, either as a, more like a park or a cell for commercial use. Right now, there's a dry pond there, I think, and a playground, and we want the waterfront. Uh, so, Mr. Bowling's aware, he's repeated that back to me, acknowledging that he knows we're interested in those pieces.
And when did we convey, this was much earlier, that that information was conveyed?
Yes.
Yes.
It was after the adoption of the strategic plan.
And he even mentioned that, if I remember correctly, in the meeting on the thirteenth, he mentioned that, that in working and talking to the city, that they wanted to move as far south because they know about a redevelopment trying to occur, um, in our CRA, so he did mention that. He did, I did not go to the meeting, but I did listen to the meeting. Um, and he just gave, he just gave kind of an overview, and I do want to make, um, a correction, um...
And they won't have a timeline yet, until they hire an architect.
Yeah.
An architect creates that timeline.
And, um, I, I'm not the one that asked, I, I just, based on your request, I directed Charles if he would please reach out to the district.
Right, well, that's what I meant, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to direct that.
Okay.
Okay, you have anything else?
No, I do not.
Okay, Commissioners, do we have anything else at this time? It's going to be, um, a little chilly this weekend, make sure you cover your plants and your pipes, and, uh, we're going to go out here, and I think Friday, we're going to...
Cover the plants.
Cover, 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 and cover the plants as best we can, and hope the wind doesn't take them off. Um, the lights are still being very, uh, much enjoyed.
Very much.
Very much enjoyed, so it's, it's been...
Mayor, I do have a question for you, and I, um, because it has to do with cold weather, and so, from what you're saying, um, you have not had any communications with the emergency management people from the county, they're not planning on doing anything special?
Nothing, I have spoken to various people, and at this time, there are no, um, there are two shelters. Karen, did you get that chance out of the paper, those two?
I haven't had a chance to...
There's two churches in Palaca that are in today's paper, and they are, um, they're taking those that need, um, shelter, warm shelter, but right now, um, in reaching out to everyone that I could reach out to, there's not going to be anything available here in Crescent City at this time. And, um, the school's not, um, at this time, the school's not opening either, because, you know, in order for a school to open like that as an emergency shelter, there has to be, there has to be an emergency declaration, you know, and so, because there's funding involved with that, and so they have to be able to have that all reimbursed, and that at this time does not happen. Um, if anything changes, by all means, Charles will let everyone know.
Sure.
I know there's some requests, um, we've had one request, um, one gentleman, um, that, uh, is, um, I guess he, he's living, he lives in a, he lives in a tent, and so he went to the library, um, but, uh, right now, nobody that I have, I have, um, spoken to is, is doing that.
Well, the, and the one concern is, um, if people are living in tents, or if they don't have transportation, there's no way to get, for them to get to fly.
There's no transport.
So, I don't know what the options are, we have rideshare? I don't have, well, I guess I can look at the rideshare number up, I wonder if it's possible with rideshare to take anyone, and in the past, I think the sheriff has said that they would take people, but I don't know all the way to Palaca.
You know, you also have, it's also a holiday, unfortunately, I mean, fortunately, but unfortunately, it's a holiday weekend, so it's a holiday weekend, and a lot of our churches right now have ceremonies that they've, you know, they've got their Christmas Eve ceremonies, they have their Christmas Day ceremonies. And, um, so, but I did reach out, um, to both, I spent some time on the telephone and trying to find out, and at this time, at this time, but that, you know, anything can change, um, anything can change, and if it does, we'll just, by all means, let Charles know so that he can reach out to everybody and, and let them know. And with that, everyone have a very merry Christmas, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Second. Second motion, second, all favor, A, say it. Bye.